Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, April 2nd Board of Selectmen's meeting. I'll read the agenda. Seven o'clock, citizens input. Seven oh five, two thousand and eighteen year in review video. Seven twenty, reappoint interim finance director town accountant. Seven thirty-five, public hearing. CRGE Foxborough LLC doing businesses. Toby Keith, I love this bar and grill. Seven fifty, commercial parking regulation discussion. Eight fifteen, discussion possible action town warrant articles and proposed FY20 budget. Eight thirty, selectmen's update. Eight thirty-five, town manager's update. Eight forty, assistant town manager's update. And then we have a few action items. Leah, do you want to lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, seven o'clock. Anybody here for citizens input? Come on up.
Patricia Stevens, sixty-three Mechanic Street. Briefly, I've been a homeowner in this town for thirty years. Fifteen of those years, I've lived at Mechanic Street. I raised my son here. I approached you people on November fourteenth in two thousand and seventeen with posters of pictures of signs around town about speed limits, lack thereof, speed limits, crosswalks, et cetera, et cetera. I have no problem with development in town. We've watched the hospital get developed, the stadium demolished, and Gillette Stadium built. The YMCA has been expanded twice since I lived there. Cumberland Farms demolished and expanded. Schneider Electric moved into Foxborough. And so needless to say, I'm a bit frustrated that nothing's done on Mechanic Street. I've had three serious accidents in front of my house. One little boy broke his femur. He was hit by a car running from the Foxborough parking lot across to the YMCA. He was new in town, didn't know the streets, and was with his friends. One lady smashed into a tree in front of my house with three little babies in the back, was forced off the road from the other side because of the way the traffic goes around trying to get into the YMCA. I had a third accident that I was home for coming down from the center of town heading towards Sharon. A woman hit a car coming out of the YMCA. Now, that's three I've been home for. I don't know, I haven't checked with the police to see how many have been there when I'm not around. But I have a copy, I made files for all of you, of the Mass General Law, which is Chapter two eighteen, seventeen C. I made copies for everybody.
You can read them for the other board members. We'll get them to them.
One for you too, Bill. Ed, I made one for you also. Bill just did tell me that the police tried to get in touch with me. I work a lot. I leave my house at six o'clock in the morning.
I'm not going to read it now.
I'm not home a lot of hours, but I will get you my phone number at work and myself. I gave those posters to Sean Buckley, and they have been misplaced. That was on the request of Chief Baker. I also wanted to ask, do you all know that exit eight, which is Mechanic Street, is the employee exit for the stadium? Is everyone aware of that? Okay. Do we know who decided that?
It's been in place for a long time. I'm not sure when.
Maybe, yeah, maybe two years since I've been here.
It's been, it's been for a number of years.
So they don't take a right on Chestnut Street. They funnel them straight through Mechanic Street. So we've got summer concerts coming up. We've got the YMCA that's going to open up there. There are summer classes. It's a nightmare. I live there. That's my neighborhood. I love my house. I love where I am. I do not love the speed. I do not mind the traffic. It's the speed. So I'd like you to seriously consider. Chris, thank you for being honest with me, driving by my house. It's not easy to go thirty miles an hour. I put up a sign. It was sliced off the pole. I put it up with duct tape over and over, so the only way to get it off would be to slice it off. I called the highway department. I called Chief, Chief O'Larry when I did it to make sure it was okay, because there's a sign going up the hill where I am, but no sign coming from the center. We've got the entrance to the YMCA right around the corner. You've got the Heron School. Those kids come through the YMCA back area and cross the street there at Pleasant. It's very busy. I just would like someone to pay attention to this. This is my neighborhood. This is where I live. And it's become like Southeast Expressway. I travel through Randolph, Milton, and Braintree. Every day Milton and Randolph to get to work. Milton is loaded with signs now. Braintree, I just, I made an article. They've got $700,000 to do traffic studies. I have a copy of, one copy of that. I haven't made those for everybody, but if anybody wants any information, I would be glad to help with this because it really is something that needs to be taken care of, if not just Mechanic Street. I, I'm here for Mechanic Street, but I've talked to other people about coke acid and just the speed in town.
If you're not home often too, is it possible to maybe leave an email address with someone? Just in case?
I just spoke to her.
You got an email address?
She's going to leave me her information. We, Police Department tried three times on three separate occasions to reach out, but it just, Pat's working, so it's difficult to reach. So we just, we'll try and get a phone number.
And I'm not home often, but when I am home, it's, it's very evident that people are not going thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for citizens input? Just make sure you state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brian Matthews. I live at fifteen Hillcrest Road. I've been here for about six years. I spoke with Mr. Keegan before about some of their abandoned properties around here, and I had a great idea for one of them. Basically, the Pace and Row property. We had talked about something before, but I told him that I was working on something else, and I was thinking, would it be a great idea for a community center to go there? The old Pace and Row abandoned property?
Is that the auditorium?
It's the auditorium property.
Was there anything in the works for that property?
Not presently. There was some discussion about that earlier, a couple of years ago. There hasn't been any discussion about it lately, though.
We really can't discuss much here, but if you want to continue that conversation with, with Bill, and we can, you know, see where it goes.
I think it'd be great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else for citizens input? All right, seeing none. Seven oh five, year in review video.
Chris, I want to thank the folks from the Foxborough Cable Station for putting this together.
This is what, about the third or fourth year?
It's the third year we've been doing this, I think, now. I think this is one of the best ones they've done, though.
Early in the tournament by Falmouth, but then last year, they made it to the Garden. Pretty exciting game. Just weren't able to get it done this year. I had said to Lisa, I think, in one of the interviews after the Warrior Classic, six more W's. That's what they needed, six more W's, and they got them.
At the World War I memorial, immediately to my right, Josephine Miller, World War II
But then, you know, the majority of my career has been here, and there's no better place to have had a career. So I want to thank people for giving those opportunities to pursue my natural curiosity about kids, about teaching and learning. I still have it. I'm still passionate about that, and to flourish and develop those skill sets.
You may not remember the equation of find instantaneous velocity, or who the Tony Knight president was, but I hope that you take with you the importance of being yourself no matter where you go in life.
Amazing. Oh, they just do so much for the community, for schools. Oh, amazing. Can't say enough. Who's this?
That is the Inzone militia.
His family, through his relationships, and I think it would be fitting to have him as
Down Foxborough, but not tonight here at Fenway Park. The Foxborough Warriors win it in three overtimes, thirty-five, thirty-three.
Sergeant Mark W. Grisby, U.S. Army. Graduated Foxborough High School, class of nineteen sixty-four. Served as squad leader, Company D, Fourth Battalion, Thirty-First Infantry. He was on a search and clear operation at Hayabook Valley to recover five soldiers. He was mortally wounded August eighteenth, nineteen sixty-nine. He was awarded the Bronze Star with an oak leaf cluster. His name is on the Vietnam Wall.
Great job. That was awesome, Bill.
I said earlier, I think it's one of the best ones they've produced so far. So great job, Mike, and thanks to your team for doing that.
Always fun to work on.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great, great team to do.
Have you done all of them?
I actually haven't done any of them. So this year, working with Amanda and a student, actually, at Southeastern Regional High School who's interning with us, Patrick O'Brien, did a bulk of the work. And I sort of came in at the last second to kind of give my two cents, but, you know, they did the bulk of the work.
So now you own the process, right?
But always a fun project. Thank you.
Yeah, now they come out really well.
Thanks for doing that. It's great. We'll post that, we'll put that on our website. As of today, of tonight, tomorrow, probably.
Tonight or tomorrow?
Tonight or tomorrow, either way. And so, so everybody else can, who didn't see it tonight, can certainly enjoy it.
Awesome. Thanks again, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, seven twenty, reappoint interim finance director town accountant. Bill?
My recommendation is the same, Mr. Chairman. I think you have all the supporting information on that as well.
Anybody on the board have any discussion on that?
I checked with Bill earlier. Our regulatory filings are, have been completed. Information is set to, sent to the town auditors. So good shape.
Want to make a motion?
All right, move to reappoint Christine Dupress as interim finance director town accountant until April sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right. All right, we're a little early in the public hearing. Why don't we take a few action items out of the way?
Just get the first one? Okay. The first one, move to reappoint Mr. James Evans Jr. to the Industrial Development Finance Authority for a five-year term, expiring April first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
All right, move to approve public event application for the Foxborough JCs for the Easter egg hunt on the Common on April thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, from eight AM to one PM.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Under discussion, I was going to say, do you guys want to come up and fill us in on this?
So just to, so it's the fourteenth now?
Right.
Okay. So just correct, correct that motion.
Do you guys want to?
Good evening.
Tell the public what we're up to?
So we.
Just actually let everybody know who you are.
Max Low, eighteen Winter Street.
Mark Revard, one sixty-six Central Street.
So we found out Sunday that there was a conflict with the Little League Baseball Softball Association, and so yesterday I met with Amanda, and we decided to move that to April fourteenth with the block of eleven AM to four PM, and the event to be at one o'clock with a rain date of Saturday, the twentieth, eight to one, with the event at ten o'clock.
Okay, okay. How many years in a row has this been? For as long as I know?
I've been a JC for now, I think, eleven years, and that's a minimum, I would say.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, awesome.
It's not an Easter egg hunt, it's an Easter egg dash. We should change the name.
It's controlled, though, right?
Oh, yeah, it's controlled. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Excellent.
Thanks for doing that. It's a fun event.
Yeah, appreciate it. So the motion was made for the thirteenth. We changed it to the fourteenth, and it was seconded. Any other further discussion? Done all those in favor? Thanks again for that and everything you guys do. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Keep trucking along for yourself?
Yeah.
Okay, move to approve tuition reimbursement for Officer Scott Dian in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to approve tuition reimbursement for Officer, oh, sorry, Ken Fitzgerald in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation of one hundred and eighty dollars to the Council on Aging and Human Services from Friends of Foxborough seniors to pay for half of Tai Chi classes in January and February, as agreed.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
And the last one, move to accept a gift donation of one thousand dollars to the Foxborough Recreation Department from the Foxborough Rotary Club.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right. All right, so we took care of the action items. I did forget at the beginning of the meeting to let everybody know that at the end of the meeting, we are going to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for the library union, and also discuss strategy with collective bargaining with the firefighter professionals union, and also to review executive session minutes. And then we will not be coming back into open session. Do we want to, why don't we discuss the commercial parking regulation? Because the public hearing, I just soon started, like, when it was posted for. So on the commercial parking lot, it's just a discussion amongst the board whether we want to entertain reopening up a discussion on amending the licenses, licensing procedure and the regulations. Back in, I believe it was January or February, we had a, an applicant to add another commercial parking lot. It was denied because of sidewalk access. So she had sent us an email formally requesting us to look into amending the licensing procedures. So the best bet is to see if the board is willing to entertain looking into that. It would probably consist of posting a public hearing, letting all the lot owners know. So anything else you want to add to that, Bill?
I think that's the best course of action. That way, everybody's been given proper notice about the topic being discussed, and that by posting it that way, there'll be an adequate opportunity for everybody to have input on it.
Yeah, and in the letter to the board that we all got a copy of, you know, she said these regulations were established in seventy-two, have gone through multiple amendments over time. So, and I, I don't even know when the last time this one was updated, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of recent ones, but I looked through everything online, and I couldn't find the sidewalks.
Yeah, two thousand and fifteen is the last, the last update.
But it's not, but not when the sidewalk piece was added, right? You couldn't find any history of that? I couldn't either.
And even that, it's, it's not necessarily sidewalk, it's have access, sidewalk access. So that can be loosely determined, you know. So I think personally, it's worth at least having a public hearing, looking into it, figuring out what the best course of action to do is.
That would afford everyone who has an issue about the regulations, and I know some people are here that are here tonight that want to speak about that issue, certainly would want to have the opportunity to speak on it. But there may be other issues, too. At that point, the board has the option of, of amending things at that time, or taking it, taking it up under consideration and possibly form a working group to, to work out the, the final language of, of any amendments. But first of all, you'd want to give, afford the opportunity for everyone to at least have input to the process so that they can, so the board can determine whether or not you want to proceed with amending the, the regulation.
I support putting it on there. I mean, I think we've all done a lot of digging into it and just, you know, talk about it.
Dave, your thoughts?
It never hurts to take a look at a policy, especially when an extended period of time has lapsed, especially today with things are rapidly changing. I think it's prudent to do that.
Okay, so we'll, should we vote on putting this on the agenda, or is?
So what I would recommend is that you set a date or a date for consideration for, for holding a hearing on this particular item.
So the sixteenth and thirtieth are our next couple of meetings.
So let's plan for the thirtieth, because I think the sixteenth.
We've got a few things already planned for the sixteenth.
Yeah, so, all right, so we'll, we'll put that for the thirtieth meeting.
Right, okay. All right.
And does that date work for maybe some of the people that are here?
Is that April thirtieth?
April thirtieth.
I'm away April thirtieth. I wouldn't like to be here.
You can certainly send testimony if you'd like. That's another option, if you're not, if you're not able to attend.
Do you think I'm going to be affected by this, though? I don't think there's a lot of people either affected by it as I am.
If we get a sense that a lot of people, if it doesn't work, we could probably push it to the following meeting. I just, I think if we do it too soon, I know we have a lot of tentative things on that agenda on the sixteenth, so.
Can we just do it the meeting after the thirtieth, then?
Yeah, the, what's that? The fourteenth?
The fourteenth of May.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, okay. All right.
So, so just a move, a motion by the board to set the, set a hearing date of, of May fourteenth for hearing on a possible amendment, possible amendment to the parking regulations.
All right, move to set a public hearing for May fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen for possible amendment to commercial parking regulation.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right. All right, public hearing. Do you want to read the notice, Leah?
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Foxborough, acting as the local licensing authority, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, April second, two thousand and nineteen, at seven thirty-five in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, Forty South Street, Foxborough, Mass, pursuant to a Chapter one thirty-eight, Section twelve, all, annual all alcoholic beverage license, and the Board's licensing authority in accordance with MGL Chapter one thirty-eight, Section seven. Board's licensing authority in accordance with MGL Chapter 138, Section 77. The purpose of the hearing will be to review and discuss information concerning the cessation of business at the premises known as C.R.G.E. Foxborough, LLC, doing business as Toby Keith's I Love This Bar and Grill, 275 Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass, manager Brian T. Burke, and to make a determination if cancellation of such license is warranted.
Okay, um, you here first, Brian? You wanna come up? So, basically, this is just for the board to formally, Bill formally, um, take back the, the existing Toby's license?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, there's the, um, there is, as you, I'm sure you'll hear from Brian tonight what the, the current situation is with regard to the license situation, and then what will happen is that, but the ABCC requires that you afford an opportunity for the license holder to be heard, um, relative to the taking of an action of, of returning a license to the, to the issuing authority. Um, if, if no testimony is heard to the contrary, then certainly that would be an action that would be appropriate.
And we formally reached out to them?
We have.
Several different ways and have heard nothing back from them?
That's correct.
Okay.
We've noticed them on several, in several different ways.
Okay.
Evening, Brian Early with, uh, Kraft Group, NPP Development. I guess what I'm here to do is to, here for is to elaborate on, um, the secession of business by C.R.G.E. doing business as Toby Keith at Patriot Place. What I have, and I've provided to the, the town manager, when I turned in the license that was abandoned in the property, uh, was a settlement and escrow agreement that we entered into with C.R.G.E., uh, that essentially, um, ceased their operation, terminated their lease with Patriot Place, and as part of that agreement, uh, they were required to turn the lease, uh, turn the liquor license over to Patriot Place, in which, uh, in, in doing so, uh, I was advised by our council to, to turn the license into the town, which I did. Within that escrow agreement, a couple key dates, uh, September 18th, 2018, NPP terminated the lease claiming that C.R.G.E. defaulted in payment of rent and violated the permitted use provision of the lease. On October 9th, 2018, NPP commenced a summary process eviction action against C.R.G.E., and the case captioned, "NPP Development, LLC versus C.R.G.E. Foxborough, LLC," in the Rantham District Court, uh, case number 157-SU-001176. So, at that point, a hearing was held on November 1st, which was a summary process hearing, uh, at the, uh, Rantham District Court, in which, um, the parties entered into the agreement of, uh, of termination and eviction of the property, which was put into escrow at the time where NPP allowed C.R.G.E. to, uh, continue operation, uh, at the premises through January 31st, 2019, uh, under certain conditions of, of keeping rent payments on a weekly basis and other things, if they defaulted on any of that, the escrow, um, condition of the, uh, of the summary process would have been acted upon and immediate eviction would have happened. What ended up finally happening on January 29th, 2018, is that Toby Keith's, uh, C.R.G.E. doing business Toby Keith ceased operation and abandoned the property. At that time, they abandoned the liquor license in place, and I further turned that in to the town with a copy of the settlement agreement signed by C.R.G.E., uh, which included the turnover of the liquor license. So, in, in effect, they abandoned the property, um, two days prior to the agreed-upon date of, of, uh, of exiting the property.
Okay, and we were in possession of that, like, license shortly thereafter?
Yes.
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
So, just to add a little bit of, uh, important information behind this, is that it's important that this action get taken, so that the lot, the town, while they, we technically are in possession of the license, the, uh, the, the, there still is a technical, uh, possibility that they still can be the license holder, and, um, this, what this would do is effectively abandon that, that action and put it back in the hands of the town, so the town could then take action to issue a new license, issue, reissue that license to someone else. So, we are, um, it's a, ABC, the, our, uh, a licensing attorney has advised us that we take this action, which is consistent with the ABCC has recommended as well.
Okay, um, just to clarify on that, we still run into the same situation as we did with Waxies, where if we terminate this license, they have a six-week, a six-month window to act upon it, or by them not...
This, this would be a little different in the sense that if they don't appear and be heard and make it, make, and make a plea for the license, then, then they certainly would not be in that same kind of position.
Okay, okay. Anybody on the board have...
How about the same question for Waxies, as far as the liquor actually in the premises still? Any questions or considerations there?
That, I believe, I, I'll have to turn to Brian on that.
Uh, well, any, any liquor that was, uh, was in the premises was destroyed and removed.
Okay, so there's no liquor in the premises still?
No. As you, as you know, we have a, a new tenant and they have started renovation work, so it's a construction zone right now.
Dave, any questions?
No, I think, um, Dave DeLuca laid it out, uh, pretty clearly, so...
Yeah, it looks like all the steps were, were done, and, um, okay.
All right, I have a rather lengthy motion to read.
We have to close the...
Oh, yeah, move to close public hearing.
Actually, hold on, anybody in the audience? Seeing none, now we can close.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion made seconded, close public hearing, all those in favor? Aye.
All right, following in-hand notice to the license holder, C.R.G.E. Foxborough, LLC, and timely notice of public hearing and opportunity to be heard on the matter of cessation of the licensed business located at 275 Patriot Place, and upon facts and evidence presented that the license holder ceased business operations on or about January 29th, 2019, and voluntarily relinquished all aforementioned all alcohol license to the Town of Foxborough, I move for the Board of Selectmen to forthwith cancel the all alcohol license issued to C.R.G.E. Foxborough, LLC, all in accordance to MGL Chapter 138, Section 77.
Second.
Motion made seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
That is closed. Thank you, thanks, Brian.
All right, 8:15, we're ahead of schedule, Dave. Discussion, possible action, town warrant articles, proposed FY '20 budget.
All right, so, um, if, if everyone would please, uh, open the, uh, the warrant, there were a couple documents that I'd like the board to take a look at tonight. One is the warrant itself, um, which is the latest draft version that we have, um, as early as this afternoon, we, we, we were going through it and noticed that, uh, unfortunately, we had uploaded the, um, to nobody's fault, it was just a, an, an, uh, an error, that we uploaded the wrong budget document to the, the warrant, so we've gone through that again today, just to make sure, double-check and thank, thank goodness we did. So, we did double-check that and we actually have the right, correct information in it.
So, the one that is version eight, as of 4/2, and it's 100, it's, uh, 38 pages?
That's correct, so that's the, the one you have there is the latest version, yeah, it's uploaded, so, uh, in addition to that, you have, uh, the budget document in detail, and, um, and I'll be guided by whatever decision you wanna do in terms of dealing with these items, but the first three items are pretty standard items in terms of the warrant, the fourth is the actual budget document, and, uh, the budget document, um, is, uh, in, in detail, plus, I've, I've also recommended some adjustments to the budget based upon our final review process that we've gone through. Technically, the budget is still in play because the, the state aid package has not been finalized, but, um, all indications are that, um, there aren't any major plan, major changes posed at this time with the state budget, so we're, we're, we're still awaiting that, but if that certainly happens, we'll, we'll deal with that as well. But, in terms of our process, um, I wanna certainly get something to the, um, to the Finance Committee, too, because they're meeting tomorrow again, uh, tomorrow night, and I wanna certainly finalize the, try and finalize the budget process with them as well. So, if, if you would open the Article 4, if that's your pleasure, I'll, I'll go through the, the, uh, and there's another document, um, that's there as well, um, the, it says the FY '20 budget adjustments.
Yeah.
All right, which I think is probably the most helpful document in terms of what, how we've reached this point. Is that we, we technically had, um, we, we had, um, some additional funding available, which we certainly didn't know until we had more information, but we received good information that, um, our renewal for our health insurance program this year was gonna be less, significantly lesser than what we had budgeted for originally, so, um, I was, I was budgeting for about a 6% increase and it, they came in about 0.8%, so it was, it was a positive position that, that we, we took, so that freed up some additional money for us to relook at some of the capital items that were contained within the budget, capital spending items that are, that are contained, which are under 25,000, or are continuously operating things such as cruisers. So, that, I wasn't able to fully fund all those items as requested, so I, I put them on hold until the very end, until we could have a better understanding of that. So, at this point, though, I'm actually looking to restore about $139,000 of capital items that are contained within the budget, um, and I'll go through those for you, uh, one is to return, uh, the fourth cruiser that was asked for by the Police Department, uh, and that's for $56,720. The Fire Department had, um, a total of $44,000 worth of capital items that they had asked for, um, which I'm looking to restore, and with another $17,000 in joint public safety building, um, I actually funded a portion of that capital request, but it looks like I'm gonna be able to do, uh, the full request and, and restore $17,000 for that as well. In Public Works, I'm looking to, um, restore $7,500 for a vehicle lift, and, um, and another, uh, replacement pile, $11,000 for a replacement plow. That's for, in, uh, the library, I'm gonna be able to, um, add $3,000 for, for technology equipment. That restores a total of $139,220 for capital items. In addition to that, um, we had, uh, and, and even though we had a good insurance report, our, uh, property and, and general insurance actually went up because we had, uh, a couple bad claims in our workers' comp, uh, situation, even though we have a, an award-winning safety program, we had some claims that were very expensive, uh, for a couple, just actually two, two claims that were very expensive. So, that actually affected our rates, so we have to, uh, so, and, and also, we had some increase in our property costs because we have newer buildings and, uh, we've added some, some newer, newer properties as well, so that boosted that request up to about nine, by $90,000 overall. We also took the remaining amount and, um, set that aside for unsettled contracts, which was $72,950. We still don't anticipate using all of that right now because we, we don't have one contract settled, but we, we could use that for next fiscal year if it does get settled during the year. So, I think we're in, in pretty good position by doing that, Mike and I were viewing that earlier tonight, and I think we're actually at the, right about the right, exact number that we need for all those contracts if they settle as we anticipate. So, those are, those are the key changes.
Sorry, I mean, then, Rob, um, so this, this doesn't change the bottom line in the budget?
It doesn't.
It's just, it's just reallocating to different line items?
Exactly, so, it, the bottom line budget has not changed, um, at all, it just, it was money that I had allocated for other, other items, which I, was, was higher than I anticipated, so I was able to reuse that in other areas of the budget. So, we're, we're still in the, in the same spot that we were when I originally presented the budget to you.
All of those capital items that you were able to add back in, were they on the agenda for, to get fulfilled in this round of capital?
Not, these are not, I do wanna be clear, this is not capital in terms of the capital request for...
The CIP stuff?
Right, for CIP, these are capital items within the budget themselves, budget itself.
Okay, all right, okay.
And it's usually because they're below 25,000, with the exception of cruiser, of course, but that's a annual appropriation that we do every year for cruisers, and then, uh, most of the items are under 25,000 on individual basis and that they, uh, so it gets handled within the budget itself.
Okay.
All right.
And with healthcare being our most important thing, I mean, most, one of our most expensive areas, if we have a save, is, can we, could we just have a save and, you know, reduce the budget by that amount, too, and not have to allocate the money other way? I mean, it's not often that we have a big save like that to be able to, you know, not have to spend it, too.
Well, the, the reason, the, the requests that were made for the capital items were genuine needs, I mean, they were not needs that I, I wanted to fund them, um, and, and if you heard the presentation before the Ad, the AdCom, the, particularly the, the items that they asked for are all good items and good requests, um, and particularly the, the, the police cruiser was one that really made sense because of how many times that those cars roll over in terms of the mileage, so they have to get so, they have to get replaced, like, every two years, and so, the, the chief prefers to have four as opposed to three, um, and it, it just really makes a lot of sense to, to do that. So, I, I particularly focused on the capital items because those are one-time expenses for the most part, you know, maybe a cruiser, the cruiser, they have to still fund every year, but they weren't for individuals or, 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 uh, additional personnel, which we know is a roll-up, additional roll-up cost, that, by doing that. So, my, my recommendation would be to, to fund these things as, as presented, for good reason, good operational reasons, um, and, um, and to, and to stay consistent with what we've been doing in, that replacing equipment as needed. Uh, it's, it's an easy, it's, it's easy every time when, when this comes forward that, that to say, "Let's push those things off," but we, all you're doing is pushing the problem down the road, and, uh, I was significantly persuaded by the fact that the, the additional cruiser was a, was a good one, as was the other equipment that was being requested as well.
How much was the, um, the savings?
It was, uh, the total of, um, the total amount that was available was the, the, the total of $139,220, $72,950, and $90,000, so it was, it was close to $300,000.
It's on page two, if you go, breaks it down, of the, um, the budget adjustment?
It's 302,170.
Go down to the last page.
Oh, okay, all right.
And you don't think you'll, we'll use the entirety of the $72,000 for unsettled contracts?
Well, I think we'll be close, it'll be, it'll be close to that number, 'cause that was the number that we were hoping, we were hoping to try and figure a way to, to pay for that, but we hadn't gotten to that point yet, um, and one of the contracts is not settled yet, so we, we certainly wanna have that, that money, money available for next year, if we can settle it during the course of the fiscal year.
One other question on that, um, the increase in the workman's comp, so does that set the bar for the next few years, like, our rate is that high now?
Actually, it, it doesn't, Chris, so what happens is that, um, if, if we, it really depends, it depends upon whether or not we have, continue to have some bad experience, if that happens, certainly that would be the case, but if it, if we can, if we have a couple good years, and knock on wood, we've had a couple good years, uh, we're in one right, one right now, if that happens, if it continues to, that will actually roll off and reduce those, the, what is known as the A-RAP and the, uh, and the, and the different, and the additional, uh, modification for the, for the, for the coverage.
Okay.
All right, so those are the, the major changes to the budget, the budget itself has not been modified, um, significantly on that, um, and so, uh, the budget is before you, the overall budget increase is about 3.9% overall for the operations, um, there is, uh, there's, and that's the, the amount that we're gonna need through, through taxation, which is actually lower than, than it has been in the past, so we, we are trying to, to stay within our capabilities, and that will be within our ability to pay, um, so that's a, is a balanced budget in that regard. So, um, so again, I do recommend the documents before you. With respect to the articles in the warrant, um, happy to go through them again with you if you'd like, um, but, um, you don't have to necessarily recommend, do, do your recommendations tonight, but I do wanna move the warrant forward to the, uh, to the, to the advisory committee as a final document, so that they can take their final action on it.
And they're doing that tomorrow, right?
And they, they are gonna try and move on it, so, because we need to get it advertised and, and posted, so that's, but the board still has their ability to make their recommendations on articles if they so choose.
Okay, so you're looking for us to vote on the budget and finalize the...
The warrant, right, as presented. Now, there were two, two, uh, items on the warrant that I'd ask you to take off the warrant, and that, and that is the, uh, the approval of the, um, police contract, with, is, we don't think we're gonna have the time, the ability to get that done right now. And then the other item is the, um, is the child sexual abuse article, which is Article 28, the board has had previous discussion about that item being taken off, but I need a formal vote for the board to, to remove that.
On the police contract, there's... On the police contract, is, it's not going to happen in time?
It's actually been, been sent to a couple of other agencies right now. We're in the process of, of still working through that, but it's, it, I don't believe it's going to be ready. It could very well be ready by the fall.
Okay.
But I just, it's not ready right now. And I don't think there's enough time to get it done before, before the, before, before town meeting.
All right. We'll definitely take your recommendation on that. And on, I know with, as a board discussed, taking the Article 28 off the child sexual abuse bylaw. So do we want to make a motion to take those two off the warrant?
Sure.
So it's Article twenty-
Yeah, yeah. Seven and twenty-eight, right?
Yep.
All right. So move to remove Article seven, the police contract, and Article twenty-eight, the child sexual abuse.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. So then, does anybody have any other questions on the warrant?
So I guess my only question, not specific on that, just process wise. So we can just move this forward to AdCom tomorrow, have them do their vote, and then come back when we maybe have more of a board here to do, to do our vote.
Yeah, recommendations.
Okay. Our recommendations. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that?
Just a motion to move it forward to the, to the, to the AdCom.
Uh, move to, move, move to move the warrant articles and proposed fiscal year twenty budget to AdCom.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. All right.
Thank you.
Very good. What do we got next? Selectmen's update. So next week, next Wednesday, the tenth, is a joint meeting with all of the Semerick Boards at the Mansfield Town Hall. Just want to let everybody know that's happening. Also, last Tuesday, myself, Mike Johns, Reverend Dudley, Linda Walsh, Amy Burdos, former Superintendent Spinelli, Rich Noonan, Met J. Barrows, and Paul Feeney at the State House testify in front of some of the state representatives and senators on the mandated reporter bill. I didn't miss anybody, did I, Mike?
I think that's everyone.
Okay. Yeah. So this would be the third time it's in front of them. Everybody seemed like they were pretty confident after we left that it would move forward. There's definitely some other supporting legislation going on. A lot of positive feedback. So that was good. I want to thank everybody that took part in that. Hopefully, third time is a charm, as Jay said.
That's why it won't be because you haven't tried, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah. No. And I want to thank everybody from back in the beginning. I mean, I, Jim typically would do this, but he was away. So I kind of came in out of the bullpen and, but everybody has put so much work into that. So really, really appreciate it. They were incredibly impressed with the amount of training that the Child Sexual Abuse Committee has been able to accomplish in this town. And we're kind of like the role model for the state and, you know, through the darkness to light, where the, the go-to, one that they point to for how to do it the right way. So a lot of hard work by everybody. So appreciate it.
It's actually one of the best programs in the country in terms of how it's, I think we're the only community in the country that, that does this level of training commitment.
Yeah.
So it's actually, it's very impressive anyways.
So that's all I have. Anybody else on the board have anything?
I was going to just mention for people that may not have kids in school, may not get the announcement, that Dr. Burdos did announce the new principal at the Ahram Middle School. So the assistant principal was, you know, promoted into that new role to take, take effect July first. So-
Great.
Excellent.
Excellent.
All right. Bill, your update?
I'm on the same lines of schools. I wanted to say that we have met and had our first meeting to plan for the next Student Government Day. We called it, last year was, was a tremendous success. We had the seventh and eighth graders here at the meeting and it actually was very well, very well received and actually made it into a highlight film this year. It was the kids, the kids did a terrific job. It was, it was a lot of fun. And I thought I wanted, I thought all the department heads really, were really well involved in it. They did a great job mentoring the, the young people, trying to learn a lot about how government works. And it was great to see them participate. And they asked really good questions. And they were really engaged. So it was great to see that. We're hoping that we'll get the same result this year. The teachers were extremely positive and enthusiastic about how it went. And we're excited to do it again this year. So we're planning on June fourth as being the next Student Government Day. And we'll see how that goes. And then we're going to start the, the early training process of meeting with the students in the various classes. Those will start later this month. And then we'll continue on right through May. And then it'll culminate in, in the Student Government Day held right here in, in the Selectmen's Chambers. So we're pleased to see that continuing to be-
Yeah, that was a good day. That was good.
It was a lot of fun. Just a reminder that on the tenth, next, next Wednesday, we'll be having the Semerick update for the four towns. I think you're, you're away, right? For that, that, that time. But we'll have the, the meet, a joint meeting with, with the other four towns. So I really would appreciate you all being there. Robert Don has some great information to share with you all. We'll, we'll talk to you a little bit about the, about how we're moving forward with the new facility. We've taken ownership of it. And now we're looking towards, getting, getting that building renovated and hopefully up and running by next June, during the July. So this, the Semerick is going to actually come and start operations on July, July first of this year. We'll be working out of our existing facility in Foxborough with, with Foxborough and Mansfield for the first year. And then Norton and Norton and Eastern will join us in, in the following year when the new facility opens. So we will be in fully operational, we hope, by, by next, next July. And it's moving along quite well. And it probably, I think at record pace, right, Mike? And it's, it's record pace compared, compared to other communities and other, other regional facilities. And we're actually setting the tone and, and the mark for the rest of the Commonwealth in terms of how we're getting this done. We, we're the ones that helped come up with the financing mechanism to, to make this all work. And, and it's actually been well received and rewritten into the regulations for it. So, so I think we've got a lot to be proud of with this new facility, this new operation. So it's going to start at six o'clock at the Mansfield Town Hall. And we'll be, we'll be holding that meeting there. The other, another regional entity that's, that's going to be celebrating later this, this, next, next month, well, on May eleventh, we'll be holding the, the ribbon cutting for the new Mansfield, Foxborough, and Norton Regional Treatment Facility that, which is, which is now completely, nearly, nearly open and operational. And they're going to, they're going to break the, cut the ribbon on May eleventh. And that'll be on a Saturday, but it'll be at ten o'clock in the morning. So again, hoping that all of you will be able to go. I think you've all received notification of that.
Yeah.
So you'll be able to attend hopefully. Because that's a, that's a significant day in the history of this, this community as well. And then tomorrow, we were, we're supposed to meet in, at the State House. Mike and I are going to go into the State House to testify on, on a new radio band funding question that we're trying to, trying to get. But unfortunately, we had to postpone it because we couldn't get enough legislators to the, to the meeting. Jay, Jay Barrows was trying to do the best he could, but they're not in formal session right now. So as a result, it's sort of, limits the attendance of legislators to be at the meeting. So we're not, we're going to postpone it to another date. But we're, we're supposed to go in tomorrow to testify on that. And then Mike and I and, and Ally Rodriguez taped another Ask, Ask the Town Manager, Ask Bill Keegan show today, earlier today. And that will be filming, coming out in the next week or so. So I think that's, wraps it up before I have Mike.
For my update, the town manager, Bill, has finished his self-evaluation for his annual process. And as early as the end of this week, we will get that, that raw information to all five selectmen. And then you'll have, you know, whatever time you need to, you know, to work on that. As I mentioned, two weeks ago, I was planning on giving you a month to do that. But Mr. Chairman, if you would let me know if you need more or less time and-
I think, yeah, I mean, it's a month timeframe because we get busy this time of year. So-
Okay. Very good. Also, to follow on, Chris, with your comments about our visit into the State House, there were a number of bills being advanced that touched upon the, the same subject matter that we were discussing, which is mandated reporter. And before we did our testimony, we met with the entire group that Chris mentioned and Senator Feeney as well as Representative Barrows. And they both discussed, you know, the strengths of what we were putting in, but also the fact that we don't have to have ownership in this and that there are a number of other pieces of legislature coming forward. And whatever goes forward, if, if ours gets mixed with something-
Okay.
And I said, I use the term ours loosely because it's really what the Child Sexual Abuse and Awareness Committee, they've been working on for years. I'm a latecomer to this process. But if, you know, if, if ours can be joined with, with what others are doing, if somebody else's name goes on it, that's fine, as long as the intent, you know, you know, is, is taken care of. And, and we did hear from some of the other folks that were testifying on the Hill. And it's, it's good to see, you know, that effort being put forward. There was someone testifying on the Hill that was in opposition to, to our, our bill. And, and it mainly focused around the, the possible costs of, of training the number of people that Foxborough has trained. And I think we answered well the questions that were raised. This is a very low-cost program. There have been approximately twenty-five hundred people have been trained. And the biggest thing is that Foxborough has done a collaborative effort with volunteers, employees from school, town, nonprofits around the, around the community. And it has done great work. And this is one of those areas where unfortunately, we're the first. There's a lot of things that we're proud to be the first at, but because of our dark history of having to deal with this in the sixties, seventies, and eighties, we're, we're forced to, where we do need to take the lead on this, you know, where, where others aren't. My last update is I want to follow on with what Bill mentioned as far as student government. It's exciting to see these, these young students and their teachers really digging in and, and taking hold of this. Bill and I and, and others around municipal government have seen difficulty in filling top-level management positions in, in finance, public administration, in other roles. So while we have a ton of applications going in for, for many of our entry-level positions, we, there's a dearth of, of talent in, in some of the other areas. So it's glad to see the excitement with our young people and that we can share our excitement in local government. And I know they're going to want to come in and, and speak with our elected officials. So it's, it's great to see our teachers and, and young folks really taking an interest in local government.
Excellent. All right. I think we went through the action items. So can I get a motion to go into executive session?
All right. Move to enter our executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with library union, where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Foxborough Professional Firefighters Association, Local 2252, where an open meeting may be detrimental to the bargaining position of the public body. And to review and approve executive session meeting minutes from February sixth, 2018, June fifth, 2018, June twentieth, 2018, October second, 2018, October thirtieth, 2018, November twenty-seventh, 2018, January eighth, 2019, and March fifth, 2019, not to reconvene in open session.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Okay. Thank you, everybody.